Okay, six o'clock, May twelfth, two thousand twenty. I call to order the City of Kennedy's regular scheduled city council meeting. Amanda, would you call the role?
Yes, sir. Counselor Breonis?
Present.
Counselor Winn?
Present.
Counselor. Counselor Fine?
Here.
Counselor Kano?
Here.
Counselor Meyer?
Here.
We're present.
Thank you. A quorum is present. Leslie, would you say the prayer, please?
Heavenly Father, we come to you this afternoon asking you to watch over us and help us to accomplish the task that we forth. Um, give us wisdom, knowledge, and understanding of each other so that we can get the things done to better serve our community. In your son's name we pray. Amen.
Amen. Thank you.
Amen.
We have anybody signed up with citizen comments?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Item number five, departmental reports.
Uh, Mayor? I had a yes. I had a two hour consultation with our city attorney this afternoon. And as this is the first time the city attorney and I have both been present at the meeting, uh, he had some concerns about some things. I agree with him. His recommendation is, uh, for this month, uh, table the departmental reports and the city manager report until next month.
Okay. Um, counsel motion, please?
I make a motion to table item number five, department report, then item number six, city manager report.
I'll second that.
I'll second that.
Is there any discussion? If there's no discussion, please call the role.
Counselor Breonis?
Yes.
Counselor Winn?
Yes.
Counselor Fine?
Yes.
Counselor Kano?
Yes.
Counselor Meyer?
Yes.
All in favor?
Item number seven, consent agenda. City Council minutes, financial report. Any movement? Any movement on consent agenda?
I think the council's ready.
Go ahead.
I was gonna say when the council's ready for the financials, just let me know.
I make a motion to discuss item number seven.
Second?
I'll second.
I'll second?
Go ahead. Discussion.
Thank you. Uh, counsel, mayor, citizens. Uh, where we're at, I'm gonna keep it shorter this month than I did last month, I promise. Um, real quick, our target number this month was, uh, fifty-eight point three-three percent. Uh, when we look at the P and L's for the general fund, what we see very quickly is that the revenues are underperforming at fifty-one point eight-seven percent. Uh, the expenses are outperforming the budget, um, at fifty-four point four-one percent. Uh, please keep in mind that when you're below the target number on revenues, that's a bad thing. And when you're above the target number on expenses, that's a good thing. Um, our water and sewer fund, uh, is also equally moving. Uh, the revenues there are underperforming the budget at forty-six point six-seven percent. However, the reason they are underperforming is, uh, due to COVID nineteen related issues that, uh, where we expended, uh, penalties for late payments and things of that nature. Uh, Ashland, the chemical company, uh, their, uh, their revenue dropped because of COVID nineteen towards the city as well. Uh, and then, uh, the City of Kennedy, when they passed the budget, they, uh, included a line item for transfers in, and we have not transferred in any money. So that is why it is underperforming. We know exactly why that is. Uh, the expenses, uh, for the water and sewer fund are, uh, they've only used about thirty-nine point three percent of their budget. So again, they're watching their expenses, so they're outperforming the budget on that. Um, I wanna touch real quickly on some of the projects we have going, uh, and the budgets related to those. Uh, we have the, uh, the paving fund, um, we have, and, uh, it's important because recently we identified the fact that we have to take care of Pullen Street, uh, to provide ingress and egress into Escondido Park on the one side. Uh, so Pullen Street's gonna become a top priority, uh, street project for us. We have five hundred and twelve thousand dollars, um, in that account, uh, that we can use to go to Pullen Street. Uh, once we, uh, finish Pullen Street, we're gonna reevaluate what's left over in that account. And then we're gonna look at the other four main streets the city indicated earlier in the fiscal year that they might want to see get done, and that would be Boone North, North Third, West Slovakia, and East Slovakia. Uh, we'll prioritize them based upon what's left, and then whatever doesn't get done this year will be number one priority for next budget year, and we'll make sure we put in substantial portion of funds to take care of those projects. Um, moving on, we have East Main Drainage, uh, that particular, uh, project, the kind still has, uh, a balance of two hundred and fifteen thousand dollars left in it to be used, so it's trending, uh, on budget right now. Uh, the issue with, uh, that is gonna be that we're on our third redesign on that, uh, but the engineer who's redesigning it, uh, just so you know, um, and we'll go over a little more next month in the manager report, uh, it's a more practical, efficient design, so it's gonna be pretty much what East Main really should be. Um, the sports complex, uh, Mr. Hall and I have been working on this, uh, to try to get a number. Uh, as we sit, our budget balance, uh, sits at one point one million to the positive, so we still have about one point one in the budget to go on that. Uh, the issue with the sports complex is, we've identified that in order to complete the project, we have an estimated, uh, two point eight, uh, that we still need to add to that, uh, and that two point eight is just construction costs, uh, no engineering costs at this point. So that'll put the project over budget about one point seven, uh, at that time. Uh, now, just to be clear, that two point eight includes things that were in the original scope, and it includes things that are not in the original scope. But Mr. Hall and I are working on this to kind of refine this down because the 4B had asked, uh, for a number, and we're trying to get them a definite number as well. Once we have that definite number, I'll bring it both to 4B and to the city council. Um, we get into the, the final set of this, uh, the water line, uh, our, our, our Carrizo project, just so y'all will know where that one is at, we've, uh, we spent about three hundred and one thousand on the Carrizo project right now. Um, we also have the Freely Lift Station upgrade, uh, which is about twenty-two thousand over budget, uh, as it sits. Uh, our Phase One at our wastewater treatment plant, which is, uh, narrowing down, it's just about totally complete. Uh, it has a positive balance in that budget line, I have marked as of today, a six hundred and twenty-one thousand. What we're gonna do with that is, once that project is completely done, we're gonna pass an ordinance, or we're gonna present y'all with an ordinance to move the remaining money from Phase One into Phase Two, which will help, uh, adjust that line item to be able to support the costs of, uh, of paying for Phase Two. Um, and then, uh, finally, the mayor and some others had asked about the manhole deal at the last meeting, and we did get that information, and I found the line item here. We have about ninety-six thousand on that that we can use for the, uh, the manhole project. So, um, that's just kind of in a nutshell. I'll try to keep it sweet this, this month for you guys.
Okay, thank you. Any questions? City Council minutes? Any movement?
We make a motion to accept both items. At the moment, the city council minutes, item A, and financial report, item B.
Second?
I'll second that.
Any other discussion? Any other discussion? I have a couple, I have a couple questions. What happened to the consent agenda? Where are the rest of the reports?
That is what the attorney and I spoke about today.
Okay, so will we be getting those soon?
We'll be taking care of that, yes, sir.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions? If there's no other discussion, please call the role.
Counselor Breonis?
Yes.
Counselor Winn?
Yes.
Counselor Fine?
Yes.
Counselor Kano?
Yes.
Counselor Meyer?
Yes.
All in favor?
Motion passes. Thank you. Item number eight, consideration and possible action in regard to proclamation twenty dash zero one. A proclamation recognizing Community Action Month and Community Council of South Central Texas Incorporated as a community action agency. Any movement?
We make a motion to accept item number eight.
Second?
I'll second.
Discussion?
Um, Mayor, you and I received a letter from the, uh, Community Action Partnership Council. Um, if it would please them, I'd like to read the letter.
Yes, please.
Hey, uh, Dear Mayor Sutton, the Community Council of South Central Texas will be celebrating Community Action Month as recognized across the United States during the month of May twenty. I am requesting the City of Kennedy take part in the celebration by proclaiming the month of May twenty twenty as Community Action Month. It is the CCA, C, the FCT's mission to empower low-income families and individuals in South Central Texas by helping them transition out of poverty and become self-sufficient. The organization does this by providing comprehensive health, nutrition, and social services programs that support families and individuals throughout the transition period. The promise of Community Action states, "Community action changes people's lives, embodies the spirit of hope, improves communities, and makes America a better place to live. We care about the entire community, and we are dedicated to helping people help themselves and each other." I hope the City of Kennedy will join CCSCT in celebration by approving the enclosed proclamation, and it is signed, uh, by the executive director, Mr. Bobby Dink. Uh, and the proclamation is there for you, Mayor, to, uh, proclaim.
Hey, my apologies, but I'm not gonna be able to read this. It's too blurry on this copy I have.
I can make it out, but it, it, it's not good form for me to read this for you since at that.
I understand. I'll have to have another copy forwarded to me. This is just too blurry.
Okay.
Can someone else read it? Does anybody else have a better look at it?
I can read it if you'd like.
Yes, please.
This is proclamation twenty zero one. Whereas the Community Council of South Central Texas Incorporated was established as a community action agency on May eleventh, nineteen sixty-five, and whereas the service area encompasses the south central and southwest Texas counties of Atascosa, Bandera, Bee, Comal, Dimmit, Edward, Frio, Gele, I can, Gillespie, Guadalupe, Karn, Kendall, Kenny, Kerr, LaSalle, Live Oak, Maverick, McMullen, Medina, Real, Uvalde, Valverde, Wilson, and Zavala. And whereas, community action has made essential contributions to individuals and families across the nation by creating economic opportunities and strengthening communities. And whereas, community action is a robust state and local force connecting people to life-changing services and creating pathways to prosperity in ninety-nine percent of all American counties. And whereas, community action builds and promotes economic stability as an essential aspect of enabling and enhancing stronger communities and stable homes. And whereas, community action promotes community-wide solutions to challenges throughout our cities, suburbs, and rural areas. And whereas, community action delivers innovative services and supports that create greater opportunities for families and children to succeed. And whereas, community action insists on community participation and involvement, ensuring that all sectors of the community have a voice and will be heard. And now therefore, I, James Sutton of Kennedy, Texas, do hereby proclaim May twenty twenty as Community Action Month in recognition of the hard work and dedication of all Kennedy, Texas, community action agents. In testimony where I have here, I have here on this set my hand and cause to be a fix the great civil city on this twelfth day of May, twenty twenty.
Thank you so much for doing that.
You're welcome.
Any discussion? Sir, have a motion?
I make a motion. We do take action and proclaim, um, May as the, um, city, I mean, Community Action Month in Kennedy.
Second?
I'll second.
I'm sorry, did someone second that?
I'll second.
Any other discussion? If there's no other discussion, please call the role.
Counselor Breonis?
Yes.
Counselor Winn? Counselor Winn?
Yes.
Counselor Fine?
Yes.
Counselor Kano?
Yes.
Counselor Meyer?
Yes.
All in favor?
Motion passes. Thank you. Item number nine, consideration and possible action in regard to sewer issues on the one hundred block of Graham Road. Any movement?
We make a motion to consider item nine on the agenda.
Second?
I'll second that.
Is there a presentation?
Uh, yes, sir. Um, this item was, uh, is on the agenda due to the, uh, abnormal rainstorm we had back in the month of March, uh, that resulted in, uh, flooding of Graham and Escondido, and then subsequently, uh, issues relating, uh, to, uh, backup into, uh, residents' home up Graham Street. Um, we, uh, have talked to the residents, uh, the city has, and, uh, the residents, uh, have gone through each of the steps that they needed to go through. Uh, they, uh, duly filed a claim with the city. Uh, those claims then went to our, uh, RIPS pool, who, uh, then sent out letters of either acceptance or rejection. Uh, those that were rejected, uh, were then, um, they then went to the next step of, uh, filing with their homeowner's insurance, waiting to see what, what they would be, um, their homeowners would be taking care of there. Uh, from that point then, uh, they have then brought it to the city council, uh, at this point, and I do believe, if I'm not mistaken, these residents are a participant to this, uh, this meeting tonight. Is that correct, Ms. Fine?
Yes.
Okay, so I guess at this point what we would do is, uh, I will yield the floor to the residents and the council and the mayor, uh, so that you all may ask them questions as, as you need, and, and they may, uh, speak to you guys. Thank you.
Yeah, Mr. Vella is gonna read a statement for the group, and then I'm gonna follow up on it. I'm David Mendoza.
Okay.
This is in reference to the homes on, uh, one hundred block of Graham Road. On Saturday, March twenty-first, two thousand twenty, following the rainfall of approximately five inches, in a block into the main sewer line, several households incurred damages to their homes due to the sewer water backing up into their homes through the toilet and bathtub drains. Damages incurred total into the tens of thousands of dollars, with one family remaining homeless. Today, plans are to submit it and for repairs, and yet all repairs to this point remain pending. And, uh, this is our appeal to the, uh, City of Kennedy Council, just for support for action for the, uh, for expediting these repairs on, and removal of any sewer contaminants from these homes, so these, uh, people can get back into their houses for one, and, uh, have their houses repaired and free of any contaminants. That's the, uh, that's the purpose of our, uh, our grouping here, I, I think. David here, say something.
Yeah, I'm gonna add, uh, the last meeting that we sat in on, uh, we, we weren't able to discuss anything, so, you know, y'all went over the, the situation that happened on the twenty-third of, uh, sewer backup, and, uh, Mr. Higgins, Jerry Higgins, uh, was, uh, was attending a meeting, I don't know if he's, he's present or not, but he made some, some, uh, comments on, on his take on what had happened, and of course, you know, I'm not, uh, questioning his experience on the job. I'm sure, you know, he knows a lot more than I do about this, but I'll disagree with some of the things that he, he referred to. First of all, you know, the people that had this damage to their homes, all of us have lived on Graham Road for over twenty years, each of us have, and we've had several rains in the past, you know, that accumulated more than when we had that day, and we've never, never had that situation, we've never had that problem. And, uh, I'm just, I'm, I'm saying that it's lack of maintenance is, is what caused the, the backup. He also referred to, uh, what happened shortly thereafter, a couple weeks after that happened, the city installed some valves, uh, I call it a trick valve, I don't know what the term, exact term is, but, uh, basically there are, you know, in case of this happening again, so it won't flood into the homes. And ironically, it happened like two weeks, two half weeks flood happened, uh, the backup into homes, and he suggested that there was something in the line that with his experience, you know, he finds a lot of trash and stuff that people throw into the lines, and then again, I'm not questioning that, but it's just a coincidence that no, no later than a few days after it happens, you know, we have a backup again. We have to call the city to come and work bottom of the hill, like I stated before in the other statement, and they had some guys doing their thing at the manhole. And, uh, I know, I know these valves, like I said, are gonna stop the backup into the homes, but at the time that those valves moved here, you know, I don't think that that, that, uh, that amount of rain had anything to do with that backup. That's just a faulty sewer line that has been for years and years and years accumulating, and lack of maintenance, research, or whatever you wanna call it, caused all the damage to these homes. And as, as Mr. Vella stated, you know, we're appealing to, to you guys, you know, to help us solve the situation. There's, there's one family that's in control. They can't even, they're not even living in their own right now since this happened. My insurance is taking care of some of, some of the damage, not all of it. You all have the paperwork, we submitted it, so again, you know, we're, we're appealing to you guys to try to do the right thing for, for us, your own ground road. That's all I have to say of that, and I don't know if, uh, it's still.
Yeah, and I'm Estella Gonzalez, and I believe you should have copies of all of my documentation, along with my summary of the events that happened. Uh, you know, I, I go ahead and, uh, I agree with what Mr. Mendoza has said, um, and I even, I even put it on my little blurb at the very end. I mean, we've been here for twenty-six years. We've been through what was at one time categorized as a tropical storm, upgraded to a hurricane one, you know, status hurricane. We've had the rain, we've never had this backup, um, you know, ever, and it, you know, it was not nice, it was not fun, uh, we've had the torrential rain before and it hasn't happened. Uh, when Mayor Sutton came over to visit me, because I mean, I was too worried about cleaning up, I wasn't worried about contacting anybody at the time. He did come to my, uh, to our door, he did apologize for it happening, and he said it was on the city's side. Negli, it was their negligence to do, to, to keep it up and to run all the performance tests needed to be run to make sure that this wouldn't happen to us. Okay, um, he later, the following, on Monday, you know, brought us the report to submit the claim to TML, and which we did. Um, the thing with the, the matter, you know, the matter, I think the only thing that's going to keep, keep us, I, I don't know what kind of decisions you're going to make, um, but, you know, keep in mind, like we, I reiterated, your choice does not have a home to live in. I know the Mendosas had, you know, a lot, a lot of people come to clean up their damage as well. I think I, I know for sure I had the least amount of damage, but still, it was damage that wasn't expected. It ruined my floors, it probably, I think it came up my walls. I have a very old home, and the tile on my walls is probably from the thirties and the forties. So if anything happens to it, it has to be totally replaced. I don't think that that should cost me anything. I submitted my paperwork, uh, to the insurance, and you have it. Uh, you know, and of course, the damage that they, uh, put on there was, um, less than my deductible. Um, I've also submitted, um, my estimates from our contractor, uh, which he, what on it, you know, and, uh, what he has given to me. So, in essence, you know, when I was even asked by the TML representative if somebody was working on the site on the day that it happened, uh, I didn't see anybody. But we are continuously seeing the work cuts here, the work, work cuts down on, you know, the manhole down at the bottom. They're, they've been working up the street. What they're doing, I don't know, but they've, you know, they've been up the streets here lately. So we do have issues with our line, you know, to say that there is not an issue and it only happened because of torrential rain is not a good excuse. Um, you know, I just, I really hope that you take our losses into consideration. Most of us are on a fixed income, and, I mean, had it been my fault, I wouldn't be coming with the city council for any of this, but I feel like this is not my fault and that the city should take some responsibility with our damages.
I have a quick question, um, for you citizens that were making comments. This is Linda, by the way. Um, how many of you are still not living in your homes?
Um, and you said that.
Can you say that again?
Yes, I'm sorry. So my question was, how many of you, uh, residents on Graham Road are not living in their homes?
Just asking, I'm telling, and, uh, sending Mendoza, David Mendoza off and on because our bathrooms, uh, don't have the flooring, and, uh, she, she refuses to use her bathroom, and I don't blame her.
There's holes in the bottom of the floor because our floors were uplifted when they came and cleaned out all the damage, all the, everything, the excrement out of our bathrooms, and it's disgusting, and I, I have to use my husband's restroom because it's not as bad as mine, but that, that puts us out on both of our restrooms. They are totally damaged, and they have to be.
I, I wanna add one thing to what Stella, uh, was telling, and, uh, you know... And, you know, throughout the years that we have lived here, the people that are gathered here today, and, you know, the rest of those people on Grand Road, you can look to any, any neighbor on this street and they can tell you, just without even thinking about it, how many times throughout the years the city has been working on this street. And don't know if it's the water, the sewer, whatever it is, but it's a continuous thing that they've been doing. It's like, to me, it's like patchwork. You know, you pack something up and then you move on and then you get another leak or whatever, you pack that up and it just continues. And it's, like I said, I mean, I know those valves are there to protect the, the members, the people living on the street from the backup. But to me, that's just like a Band-Aid, that's just, you know, a temporary fix. Because like I stated earlier, long sooner had you all took those valves replaced and we had a backup again.
April eleventh, and we were home that day. And the sewer was spilling out of the yard again. So we had to call the city again.
I have another question. Um, and, and for all of you, I didn't quite hear a minute ago, but the damage has not been repaired yet, is that correct? Bring it up.
That is, that is correct.
Okay, I was just, I was just curious because I didn't hear. I'm so sorry all this happened to you guys. And hopefully all of us here today can, can get a good solution for you guys and get all this done.
It's very stressful. I don't know if you've heard or not, but my husband had a heart attack, um, last month. So he's been under a lot of stress and this sure doesn't help.
I can imagine.
It does. Mr. Lynn or Adolfo, what are our options here? What can we do to get our residents taken care of?
Uh, there's Adolfo, can you hear me?
Yeah.
Hello? Okay, okay. Um, I think that the process usually goes, it's submitted to the risk pool and to the homeowner's, homeowner's insurance. Uh, and I believe the, uh, the Mendoza's and the Gonzalez's obtained, uh, coverage through their homeowner's insurance and the Yachta's, uh, and both the Yachta's, the Mendoza's and the Gonzalez's were denied by the risk pool. The reason the risk pool, uh, denied the claim is because, uh, cities are immune from lawsuits. There are only a few exceptions. One is through the, uh, use of, uh, machinery, uh, vehicles for one, machinery. Uh, and in this particular case, uh, the sewer failure or backup does not fall under any of the exceptions, uh, to the Texas Torque Claims Act. In other words, the city still retains its immunity. Uh, it may be, uh, because it does not, wasn't used of, uh, tangible property on the part of the city. Uh, and therefore, the city retains its immunity. So with regard to the city, any, uh, any legal duty to pay those claims, the city doesn't have a duty. In a sense, it may sound harsh, it may sound, uh, uh, I guess, uncaring, but the city is immune from these type of claims and doesn't have to, uh, pay the, the, uh, the citizens, uh, any, uh, any, uh, any money for the damages. So that, that's the, uh, the immunity that the city has. It does not have to pay anything to the clients.
Well, I mean, I, I understand that, but I don't, I don't believe that that's the right thing to do.
Oh, not at all.
May, may I ask a question? City manager Lynn, may I ask a question?
Yes, yes.
Attorney Ruiz. Can you hear me?
Yes, I can hear you.
Okay, so, okay, so we've established the fact that the city has no legal liability in this matter due to sovereign immunity, okay? That, that, that's fine.
Yes, that's correct.
The question I would ask you is, is there anything that precludes us from a municipality of just doing something on our own, uh, to, to provide immuneration for these people?
There, there's two things that come to mind. Uh, number one is that, um, it's, you set a precedent somewhat. The city is not obligated to make reparations because our sovereign immunity, uh, if you make an exception in this case, then, uh, another situation where, uh, the same circumstances may arise, uh, then, you know, city has to determine, okay, so we, although we're not obligated legally or obligated to do so, let's go ahead and, and pay the, the citizens, uh, for the damages. Uh, there's two things that, problems that come about that. Number one is precedent, and number two is, uh, the, uh, inequality in a sense. If you say yes to a particular circumstance or situation and you say no, uh, to another, then, uh, there's some inequality with regard to what the city pays out. That's just, that's a, that's just something to consider. Uh, the, the second, or technically, I guess, the third one is that, uh, any city that pays money to a private individual is considered a gift. Uh, and, and that is, that is not, uh, that, you can't do that under the statute. Uh, any public funds for a private purpose is prohibited. Uh, now that being said, those are the issues that the city has to consider in a determination, uh, whether to give any compensation to citizens or not. Just as long as the, uh, council members are aware that, uh, they said precedents, you, it may lead to inequality of, if the circumstance happens again, you'll say no to one particular group and yes to another. Uh, the third is you can't give city money for, uh, public money for a private purpose. Uh, so those are the risk factors I have to notify the city.
Thank you.
Cindy, I, I, um, the, the folks that have submitted to their insurance company, did their insurance company pay the claim or deny the claim?
Uh, let's go ahead for, uh, Mr. Lynn.
On our claim...
Mr. Mendoza?
On our claim, the insurance company did not pay all of it. Uh, master bedroom floor is a hardwood floor, and they're not gonna cover the whole floor. And that's, that's my stand on as far as what I want the city to step up and, you know, pay the difference. But, you know, there is different situations for the other companies, so that's, that's where I stand. Um, you know, the gentleman, I was just speaking about laws and all that. I don't know anything about laws, I just, I did some research on them. There are some ways of going, learning about this, which I would, you know, I don't wanna go that route, but if it has to be that way, it's gonna, you know, it's gonna be. I, I have been talking to my contractor, you know, several people in business, and he's mentioned a few rains. Um, but like I said, I, I mean, I don't see why you shouldn't have to go that route, I really don't. But I leave that up to you guys. You, you all, like I said, you all know the situation that we're in. You all heard us talk about what to me attributed to the backup in the homes. And we, you know, we can, we can go back and talk about this all day long. But the fact is that it's never happened since I've lived here. That is a fact. The fact that it rained that day, yeah. It's rained a bunch of other days in the past years, that's a fact. So, I mean, yeah, and I re- I recognize immunity on the, on the city, and you have to give what, what a law it is. But there's others that are, you know, that can help the residents. You know, so like I said, I leave that up to you guys, we can actually win here.
I have a question on, uh, I know it's Bella. Uh, is there, uh, any liability or any immunity? Is there faulty infrastructure of the sewer and storm, storm lines? And the reason I ask is that that day of March twenty first, we were bailing water, paling water for two or three hours. And all of that was, was not only sewer water, it was rainwater, so. It, it seems, uh, not right, you know, that we have storm water with sewer water that should be two distinct lines. So I guess, uh, it would be faulty infrastructure. In that case, should there be a cross connection with the water and the storm sewer line and, and, well, the storm drain line and the sewer base line? Is there any liability there? Or do we have any light to stand on? Should we just pick that route of, uh, you know, being a faulty infrastructure because the sewer and the storm, storm, uh, line are interconnected, crossing this back part of, of the, through the store, uh, storm line, uh, sewer line into the houses?
Adolfo?
Yes, uh, again, the session is very limp. Yeah, I can hear, can you hear me? Yeah. Yeah, can I hear you? Okay. Uh, the session is very limited with regard to what, uh, to exempt the, uh, city in order to have liability. It has to be the use of tangible personal property. Now, with regard to the, uh, the facts in this case and what the Texas Municipal League has determined to deny the claim is that there was not a, uh, use, a condition of use of tangible personal property. And that's generally, generally it, the, the immunity applies. And, uh, and so since it doesn't fall into that little category, that narrow category, the city retains its immunity.
Adolfo?
Yes.
Are you done?
Yes, I'm finished.
I'm sorry, I just, I have a very, my end is very bad. I can barely make out some of them in the speech. I hear dogs, dogs, we see all kinds of stuff. But I have some questions.
I have, I having the same problem, James. I, I don't know what's going on. Somebody's phone is picking up all kind of background noise.
Adolfo, can you hear me now? I can hear you now, but I, I'm picking up some of that background noise as well. I guess someone who's on the line has a TV in the background or something, that may. Now I don't hear it anymore, so.
It was the, it was the Mendoza's line, so I've muted them and whenever, um, y'all are ready to, uh, ask them a question, I'll unmute them again, just so you can hear.
Okay, uh, here, here's, I guess, my question for you, Adolfo. Let's say that the city council says, hey, this isn't right, and we wanna do something to make it right for the people. What is their problem? What is the city council's problem if they choose to do that?
The, uh, it's the, I guess, the risk factors or the consequences, let's say it that way. Is with regard to the, uh, uh, city precedent, uh, having, uh, I guess, a, if this happens again, if the city decides to say no, then, you know, why no to these people and this and the other? And the third is, uh, public funds for, for a private interest. And those are the three matters you need to, to consider. Now, can the city still, uh, you know, provide some, uh, I guess, you know, pay for some of the damages? Uh, the, the city council can make a determination however they choose. Uh, I recommend that they, that, that because of those considerations should be taking a consideration and that the city should not. But it's a council decision to make. And, uh, I just have to make the council aware of the, those risk factors.
Okay, my next...
Go ahead, James.
My next question, Adolfo, is this. No one came out and said they're gonna file a lawsuit against the city, but it sounded like they may be going that route? Is that enough for us to go into an executive session and discuss this?
It's, the city has immunity. Unless, you know, they, you know, if it's a, uh, a, uh, but it, it's, it's not necessarily, because if the facts are here, if there's a condition of a use of tangible personal property, I, I think the, the, the TML would have discovered if there was one or not. Uh, if they, if anyone would consider filing a lawsuit, the city has their immunity, uh, in defense. And, uh, then, you know, we go from there. So it's, uh, you know, I guess that's, that's my response, either open it or close session. The statute is fairly clear. And, uh, and they've been, it's my understanding that, uh, some compensation has already been received. Uh, they just want the city to make a, pay the difference. Now, there's a reason why the insurance company didn't make the whole payment. Uh, and that may be in the paperwork that was provided, uh, by the citizens.
Can't find that paper.
Uh, yeah. Well, if, if there was a reason why they were made whole, maybe it's because they're deductible. But, uh, the insurance adjusters find things that, um, uh, you know, that aren't covered under the policy. And so if that is a request to the city, then I think it may be a little unfair to the city to pay a claim that an insurance company doesn't wanna pay for. But again, that's, that's the, that's something that the citizens have to answer those questions so the council will be satisfied. Uh, you know, why weren't they made whole, uh, by their insurance company? We have the answer from TML, uh, the, uh, you know, then, you know, why weren't they compensated the amount that they should be? Is, uh, a question I think the city should consider before, you know, making a consideration to, to, uh, try to make them whole.
Okay.
So, Mr. Mendoza, do you know why the insurance didn't cover the whole amount?
Can you hear me?
Yes, sir.
Well, I'm glad you asked for that. Uh, Adolfo, is that your name?
Yes.
I didn't catch it. Are you, uh, uh, lawyer for the city or I'm not sure your position is?
Yes, the, the city attorney.
Okay, have you ever heard of ITEL?
I'm sorry?
Have you ever heard of ITEL?
No, sir.
I-T-E-L, have you ever heard of that?
No, no, sir.
Okay, that is a, a company that came into existence in the nineties because of what you were talking about, about insurances denying claims or overpaying or whatever. And that's a dispute that I have with the insurance company right now. They chose to take a sample of my flooring and submit to this company. And I did some research on that company. And they're, they're just another tool that the insurance company uses to try to get, get away with not paying, you know, I mean, they're, they're in a business to make money. And, all right, I did, I did a bunch of research on it, they're, they make a lot of mistakes. The, the company that came and did the estimate on our hardwood floor
has done, has done compared to the neighborhood. They're from San Antonio, Hammond's Flooring. They're, uh, they're known around here. And the neighbors. Their estimate came out to eighteen thousand, all right?
This for the bedroom floor?
This for the bedroom floor, master bedroom floor. Me, I don't have any, uh, knowledge of that. I thought it was too high, so that's why I got this other contractor to, to do the estimate. Their estimate came out to ten thousand. You know what USA's estimate came out to? Three thousand. Now, you figure that out. How can there be such a discrepancy? From a reputable company that that's all they do is flooring, ensure their estimate is way, way high, from eighteen thousand down to three thousand dollars? They sent it to that company called ITEL. And that's what the problem is. That's why I'm trying to get the same kind of flooring in my bedroom that's in there right now that, uh, ITEL came up with some, some magic thing that they do and say, no, this is, this is the kind of flooring that you, that's gonna go in there now.
That's too much of a discrepancy, that amount.
So, I mean, I, I, that's, that's one of the reasons that the insurance company, uh, didn't pay for the whole estimate. And.
And, uh, 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 so there, there's a vote for reasons again. And, uh, I, I, I hear your concern. Uh, that appears to be an issue between you and, and your insurance company. All, all I could, all I could say is that the city has immunity and does not have to pay the claim at, at all.
Yeah.
Uh, my second concern is that if the city were to pay an amount, uh, it, it, yeah, the city should, you know, the, the city council even to consider to pay the amount, uh, you know, what amount do I get to pay? Although, again, I recommend that the city has immunity and they don't have to. Um, it's, it's a, the, the issue with regards to how the estimate was made falls on your insurance company and, and not, not the city and, and that should be, uh, you know, I, I guess that's my reason.
This, this one has never been a, a problem is the backup, the backup end, you know, happening to begin with. But that's why I understand.
Not, not only that, they came like two days later to put it, put in those backup, uh, valves. You know, and that looked really fishy that all of a sudden they're on, they're on their toes putting in those valves. And, uh, it should have been done before this happened. And if we weren't, we, if I wouldn't have been home that day, my whole house would have been flooded. You know, and. Especially Atcholas, Atcholas don't have a home to live in, and that's the problem, the problem.
There, there are things, you know, that you were saying, and I, I understand where you're coming from. Yeah, you know, do you pay yours, you know? Well, what's gonna stop the, this guy from, you know, trying to make a claim against the city? And that's what the problem I have with that law, because it's almost like a crutch for you guys. You know, they don't do the maintenance on the street side, what are they gonna do? They're gonna sue us, they can't. So, I mean, I, I just don't.
I, I just think that everything should be taken that case by case basis. And, you know, not, not every case is gonna be, y'all are gonna be liable for. But I think that this one, that, you know, we have a good, like, stand on. And, I mean, I miss some dollars and the re, and I kind of support what Cindy, Ms. Mendoza is saying only because the mayor of the city of Kennedy came to my doorstep. I didn't call him to come over. He came to my doorstep and he admitted that we had a faulty system. And what happened was because of the city's negligence to do their part in keeping our sewers flowing like it's supposed to, our lines flowing like it's supposed to. So I have somebody here, you know, that, like I said, the city, the, the mayor is accepting that it was the city's fault for not doing it. And then I hear Adolfo saying that, you know, it's gonna set a precedent. Everything sets the precedent nowadays. Any kind of decision we make sets precedent nowadays. You know, and I think that the precedent that we're trying to say is this happened to us, it shouldn't have happened to us. We should be compensated for the damages that we've had. And then what we need to do is make, and to earmark what faulty system, infrastructure we have in the city and start making those repairs so that it doesn't happen to another constituent again. It was a very ugly, messy, dirty, sloppy, ugly work we had to clean up ourselves. Uh, you know, and we're, you know, I, you know, and I thank God that I didn't have as much damage as the Mendoza's or the Atcholas did because I probably would be here crying and I would probably wouldn't be as nice as I am. But it was not nice to clean up. I had a baby in my home as well, you know, and, you know, having feces from everybody, every, you know, from up the neighborhood, it's not nice to have. You know, and it shouldn't have happened to begin with. Uh, you know, and it's like I told, uh, Our Lady from the TML, uh, person, you know, the rain, hard wash, you know, don't give me about, you know, we got so much torrential rain because we've had it. And you've heard me in my opening statements, we've had that torrential rain before. The, you know, it shouldn't have happened. It's, it's because of the faulty systems that we have. And, you know, regardless of your immunity or not, I feel that this has to be made right for us.
Yes, and this is Dora Ochoa and Mike. And, uh, we've been here since nineteen seventy five and nothing has happened like this. It was terrible. I thought I was gonna have a heart attack just seeing all that water that we were trying to get out of our house and we couldn't. And, uh, then Mr. Bedlam, after three hours, working with all that water, trying to get it out, went outside and hit a, some kind of pipe outside. And then the sewer started coming down on our bathtub and our commode, but it was shooting out on the outside on our backyard. And, uh, I think it was.
Sorry, man, who hit, uh, who hit, who hit the pipe? Sorry, you need to get, somebody hit the pipe? I'm sorry?
He was helping us. He was helping us getting the water out of our house and everything. And after through three hours of doing that, he finally went outside and says, well, let's see what we can find. So he hit something outside a pipe and busted it. And then the sewer started coming out from there and not into our house. But it was already too late for us. And then on a Monday, uh, the city manager went into our house and looked at it. And he said, well, the city has, this is why the city has insurance for stuff that happens.
Like this.
Like this, you know? And he said that y'all had some kind of insurance to pay for damages that would happen, you know, like it happened that way.
Yeah, he lived in the house.
And we haven't been in that house since, uh, that day of that, that occasion. And if you go into our house right now, it smells terrible. So we had it disinfected from a company from San Antonio. Still, I mean, you know, you go in there and it is, it stinks. So we've been out of our house.
Council members, I'd like to push the council into executive session, please. Anybody have a motion? I'll make a motion if we go into executive session. Second? Second, second. Any discussion on going into executive session?
Mayor?
Yeah.
You need to state, uh, we're going into executive session for the record, please.
Can somebody mute them, Mendoza's, I get that phone and I can't hear. Okay. Okay, thank you. Now, can we restart this, please?
Is there a motion to go into executive session?
Yeah, I'll make a motion.
And the reason for executive.
Executive session.
Yeah, you gotta state the reason why we're in the executive session for the record, please.
To seek a legal counsel.
City attorney, yeah.
To seek legal counsel from the city, city lawyer.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Is there any discussion? If there's no discussion, Amanda, please call the roll.
Council Bionis?
Yes.
For Wynn?
Yes.
Council Sine?
Yes.
Council Kano?
Yes.
Council Meyer?
Yes.
All in favor?
At this time, we're going into executive session for consultation with attorney. Uh, Adolfo, how are we gonna do this?
Yes, sir. Um, Amanda's gonna, uh, text us the phone number to call in and the code. And it's a separate number, separate code. And, uh, then we'll, uh, uh, have executive session, uh, at that number.
Do we have to hang up? Or no? We do?
I think, yeah, we have to hang up or then dial the number that Amanda texts us or emails us, however she wants.
Adolfo? Adolfo? How do we assure the public or everyone else that there's not five people sitting next to me on my telephone while I'm in this executive session?
Well, if, we have to take your word for it.
I'm sorry?
Uh, if, if, yeah, we have to take your word. If you're gonna represent us, you're gonna be the only one in executive session and no one else is gonna be in the room. Uh, make sure that, I guess, each council member will state that, make that statements and, and that, that's good enough. We take the council member at his or her word.
Is city council okay with that?
I'm not a hundred percent okay with that.
I'm not, I, I am not either.
Anyone else not okay with that? So you guys are saying that you don't, you, you guys are saying that you don't believe that the councils that we have will tell the truth?
No. What I'm saying is, how do we? No, how do we not know that I have five people standing here with me or that I'm not gonna text the numbers? I'm just, I don't know, you can't guarantee that.
Either, either, either you're a council person that's true to what you say or you shouldn't be on this council.
I, I am.
So, see, I believe that you don't have anybody, but you're saying that you don't believe that all five of us not, wouldn't have somebody?
Well, I'm not, I'm not saying that, but I don't know. I'd like to think that that's not true, but I, I don't know, not a hundred percent. I mean.
Yeah, too, we've had a lot of stuff going on. I can, I get that, and we've had a lot of stuff. And, I mean, I just, are we good to go with people being solo?
I'm good.
I'm sitting here by my, I'm sitting here by myself.
I'm sitting by myself.
I'm sitting by myself.
Same here.
I'm sitting by myself.
Okay, so do we somewhat trust each other in all of this?
I trust all of you because you took an oath to be a council person.
Amen, thank you. Okay, and the motion and the second were made. Uh, everybody voted in favor, is that correct?
Yes.
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 Okay, uh, assist the numbers, Amanda.
Amanda, you're gonna text. To the, the, um, the citizens that are listening, as soon as we go back into open session, I will post it on our Facebook page so you can call back in. So please just watch the Facebook page.
Okay. Amanda, you're gonna email it, text it to us?
I'm gonna text it to y'all.
Okay, so I'm hanging up to wait for the number.
Okay.
Audio PIN followed by the pound or hash sign. If you do not have a PIN, just press pound or hash. This conference will now be recorded.
Connect, um, for just recess, the, the city council, uh, teleconference and we could be at a time to be posted.
We have to wait the seventy-two hours for that? But since we're already in the meeting, we just moved it. I said we won't have to wait the seventy-two hours, correct? Since we restarted the meeting, we just moved it over to another day?
It's, it's, yeah, it's hard to talk off, but usually if it's a person to person, it's the same place, uh, the same time. Uh, but I would, I would do seventy-two hours.
Amanda, can you mute whoever that is that's laughing in the background?
Through.
Muted.
Okay. Oh, my gosh, Adolfo, can you say that again? I'm so sorry.
Is there a question?
Yes, it's, it's, um, let's, it, it, we could reconvene in another, if we cannot get back on the, uh, on the, uh, line to, to, uh, continue to the council meeting, uh, we can, we convene at another posted period of time, and I recommend another seventy-two hours. Uh, and, uh, you know, so if we don't get back, let's say we suddenly drop off, if we cannot get hold of each other, then, uh, then, uh, yeah, let's see, we'll just reconvene in another date that we're posted. And we can make that announcement now since we got out of the session. It's not on the, it's not per se on the agenda, but we have to, we have to, uh, let the people who are listening know what's gonna happen in case we do lose interest in it.
Adolfo?
Yes, sir.
Can I entertain a motion, uh, to go into a recess until six PM Wednesday, the thirteenth, in the event that we're disconnected?
Well, I, tomorrow, I won't be able, I'll be working at HEB tomorrow.
And I'll be, I've gotta be at the, uh, I've got another meeting to be at tomorrow at six.
Okay. Then we'll reconvene at a later date and we'll post it?
Yes.
Hey, what about, they're gonna be good with Thursday?
This is Brenda, I'm good with Thursday.
That's what's good with Thursday.
I'm good with Thursday.
Unmuted.
Yes, sir.
Yes, I can do Thursday.
Okay.
Okay, at this time, we're gonna reconvene in open session.
Right.
Yes.
This phone stuff is terrible.
Mr. Lynn, could you say something?
Hello?
Okay.
Got it?
Yes, but I have you as Brandon, so I gotta find where Brandon's at. Brandon, can you say something?
Amanda, right here.
Why is it coming? Okay, I see call thirteen, okay, I see it, thank you.
Is there a motion to reconvene into open session?
I'll make a motion. Reconvene in open session.
Second?
I'll second that.
Amanda, please call the roll.
Council Bionis?
Yes.
Council Wynn? Council Wynn?
Yes.
Council Sine?
Yes.
Council Kano?
Yes.
Council Meyer? Council Meyer? Councilor Meyer?
You lose Justin?
Are you there, Justin?
Justin? Come in, Justin.
He just texted me. No. He's here, but we can't hear him.
Uh, the weather's getting really, really nasty outside.
Yeah.
It's really-
Like, warning to you, eleven o'clock.
We'll find Justin. He's, he said he can hear us, but we just can't hear him. I'm gonna tell him to hang up and call back.
So did he vote in favor or against?
I don't think he voted. Amanda?
She's, she said she could hear him.
He said, um, that he, yes, that he voted in favor.
Motion passes, we'll wait for him to get back on. And I think we need to go into recess. Okay. Amanda, let me know when he's back on, please.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Are you on Justin?
Can y'all hear me now? Yes.
Yes.
Okay. Item number nine, consideration of possible action in regard to sewer issues on the one hundred block of Brent Rose. Any movement? Do we have any movement on item number nine?
I make a motion that we take no action at this time.
Second?
I'll second that.
Discussion?
I just wanna say, so it's on record, I think after we found out the information from T M L and after the, receiving the advice in closed session with the city attorney at this point, it's at the best interest of the city not to take any action until further notice.
Any other discussion? If there's no other discussion, please call the roll.
Councilor Bionis?
No.
Councilor Wynn?
Yes.
Councilor Stein?
No.
Councilor Kano?
Yes.
Councilor Meyer?
Yes.
Motion passes. Does anybody have a motion to go into recess until Thursday at six P M?
A motion that we go into recess due to the weather conditions, uh, to Thursday at six.
I'll second that.
Any discussions? If there's no discussion, Amanda, please call the roll.
Councilor Bionis?
Yes.
Councilor Wynn?
Yes.
Councilor Stein?
Yes.
Councilor Kano?
Yes.
Councilor Meyer?
Yes.
All in favor?
Motion passes, thank you, guys, we're going into recess until Thursday, uh, May fourteenth at six P M. Everybody be safe.
Bye.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Oh, my God.